I'm going to bring you one by one in the room and we can begin shortly.
Good evening.
Liz and Kathy, can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes, we can, Dave.
Great. So just want to make sure that one time when you guys couldn't hear me, I don't know what the deal was, but great, thank you.
Uh huh.
How's everybody doing this evening?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Counsel, I want to let you know that Mr. Sayers is having some issues logging in and so is Mr. Betza. I am working the issue now and we should have a resolution here hopefully by the time the meeting starts.
Well, we're an hour for caucus, so it'll be fine.
Okay, Jason, it looks like you're in the room. If you could give me a little audio check.
Hey Frank, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, can you see me? No, huh?
If you just click it so the line is no longer through your camera, it should work. There's no double clicking necessary.
The line, okay.
Yeah, either at the bottom or the top of your screen, there should be a microphone and a camera right next to each other. One should have a red line through it. If it is, if you have a camera that does not have a red line through it, you do not have video capabilities on your computer.
Now, I do have it. I just got to figure out why it's not coming in.
Okay, there is an arrow next to the camera that will say select a camera. Sometimes you have to click on the type of camera that you have and that will make it work.
Can everybody hear me?
Mr. Betza, you are loud and clear.
All right, I just want to make sure everybody's aware that we do not have a council meeting until seven o'clock. From six thirty to seven, this is an informational session. So this is, we just have to be careful that we don't debate or make decisions in this half hour. So you're just here to listen. You can ask any questions. At seven o'clock, you can discuss and debate anything from that moment forward. I just want to make sure because that's not how it was advertised. So from six thirty to seven, you're listening and asking questions.
Yeah, doesn't our meeting start at seven thirty? That's our normal meeting time.
No, well, that's what we call it, but the caucus is also open to the public.
Okay.
That's the more traditional meeting, but your meeting that is advertised and open to the public is from seven o'clock on. You're correct that we don't really do anything other than get some preliminary information during the caucus. But the caucus is still an open meeting where you can discuss and debate things. What we need to be careful of is not to discuss or debate between six thirty and seven. You're just receiving information.
Mr. Sayers, you wanted me to share a presentation. You sent me two. One looks like a diagram of a map and the other one has many more slides.
Yeah, let's go with the one that has many more slides.
Okay.
And just tell me when I can begin.
That would be up to who's ever leading the caucus meeting tonight. So I don't have Chief Fire Inspector Darren Hart on just yet. But if you wanted to proceed with Mr. Sayers, counsel, all of counsel is in the meeting at this point.
Okay, are you ready to let Mr. Sayers proceed?
Yeah.
Mr. Sayers, you're on.
Hey, all right, thank you. Thank you, counsel, for the opportunity to discuss the city's West Eighth Street multimodal project. It's okay with counsel. I'll give a brief overview of the project and then show a few exhibits and then see if there's any comments. The project's work limits would be Pittsburgh Avenue on the west side and Green Garden Road on the east side. This is a streetscape project that will include such items as asphalt resurfacing, pavement markings, new inlets, curbs, sidewalks, driveway aprons, ADA curb ramps, pedestrian lighting and tree planting. In addition, a new traffic signal, including a left turn phase for both eastbound and westbound traffic, will be installed at the West Eighth and Lincoln intersection. The total cost estimate for the project is 3.3 million and that is split up by a state multimodal transportation grant for two and a half million with the remainder is City of Erie matching funds for 778,000. So Frank, can we go to the, okay, you have it up. Back to the first slide. Thank you. Okay, so I'll start with this.
Um, sorry to interrupt, Jason. Is there any way you can make that a little larger?
You can actually zoom in, Kathy.
How do I do that?
Put your, do your little, put your little fingers on there and expand it like you would a photo.
I should have zoomed in for you, Kathy. I don't know if you can see it or not.
Okay, I, it is better. Thank you so much.
No.
That good?
Thank you. That's better. Thank you.
Okay, so I wanted to start out by just, this is a page out of Erie Refocused. And as you can see, the West Eight, it's actually mislabeled on here as East Eight, but it's actually West Eighth Street. From, they had this area identified in that report from Pittsburgh Ave over to you can see there Frontier Park on the east side. So this was identified in Erie Refocused as a targeted area for streetscape improvements. And that's what this project is designed to do that we're talking about tonight. You go to the next one, Frank. On down. Keep going. There we go. Okay. Okay, this is a master plan. And what this page does is it shows the typical components that you'd find in a streetscape. So if you look on there, you can see we've got the curbs and the, and the buffer zone with the, with the trees. There's a pedestrian light shown on there, I think labeled B, and a sidewalk. And so this is typically the, this is what you're going to see, not every component, but in general, this is what the streetscape projects are designed to do. So if you go to the next one, Frank. Okay, now, this is not West Eighth Street. This is West Eleventh Street. And I wanted to show a couple of slides just to show counsel. This is a project that we did back in 2018. So I'm standing here at Eleventh and Peach looking west. And this was West Eleventh Street before we did the streetscape project. And then if Frank goes to the next slide, you'll see what it looks like today. Okay, there we go. So you can see, this is a good representation of what the projects do. You have brand new sidewalks, brand new aprons, curbs, trees are in there, grass space. This one does not have, this project did not have pedestrian lighting. But other than that, I think it's pretty typical of what, of the look that we're going to be looking for out on Eighth. So then we go to the next one. Now, this next series of slides are on Eighth Street and they're going to progress from west to east. And I got just a few here to run through that show the existing conditions out there and the things that we hope to see or the things that we will see improvements on. So this, this first one is taken just east of Pittsburgh Avenue. You can see PNC Bank there. We have these high curbs on a sidewalk that are not pedestrian friendly. They're not, certainly not ADA compliant. And so you can see, there's a couple islands here in the middle with full curbs. These will all be fixed. So next. This is a, two, this is the corner of Robin Drive. We have two corners that are non-ADA compliant with blackened curb ramps. Next. This is going to be the northwest corner at Connecticut. And you can see that this does not have any sidewalk at all. This is a vacant lot with no sidewalk ever put in. So this will have a brand new sidewalk on it. Next. I think this is another non-compliant curb ramp. It can move past. This would be at, this would be at Beverly. Okay, this, this is a typical picture of, this happens to be Little Caesar's, but the typical thing with this is what we're trying to show is there's a lot of this going on where we have, I call it a sea of asphalt, but you can see the roadway blends into the, into the asphalt parking lot. So what we're looking at doing here is you'll have an actual new sidewalk put through, new concrete apron, curbing, it might be depressed curbing, but that, that will be there. And then we'll put in whatever green space we can to offer delineation. But this is a typical photo. I'm sure everybody has seen a lot of this out there. So go on to the next one, Frank. Another, this is another non-compliant curb. I think you could skip this one, go on to the next one. Typical thing here, if you want to keep moving. It's a bad curb ramp. Okay, on this slide, you can see the pole on, in the middle of the sidewalk. And this is a bit of concern. It's something that will be addressed on the project. We're going to definitely make sure that we have adequate width of sidewalk on the other side of that pole that you see in the picture. This is pretty typical. This is taken in the 1800 block of, I believe it's, it's east of Delaware. But it's repeated down through the corridor further to the east. But we'll definitely have like adequate sidewalk passing zone on the other side of those poles that will be, that will meet ADA requirements. It'll be safe for pedestrians. Okay, it can move past. Okay. This one is coming to Lincoln and you'll see the traffic light there. And this is going to get a, a brand new signal at Lincoln Avenue. It's also going to have a left turn lane that's going to be added in. So we're looking east at the existing traffic signal. And if you want to go to the next one, Frank, it'll be the same traffic signal, looking at it in a, in a westerly direction. And again, we're going to have that left, that left turn lane will be added in on Eighth Street. So you can make that left and head south on Lincoln. Okay, now we're getting towards the end of the job. I think we've got three more slides to show you. This is coming into Shriners. You can see the wood bollards there on the south side and a lack of a sidewalk. So this project will have a new sidewalk in that area. You want to keep, go to the next one. Here we have, this is right in front of Shriners Hospital, lack of a sidewalk. You know, lack of curb, that will all be added in. And then we have one more. And this, this is a wooded area. I think everybody's familiar with it. It's going to be right across from Frontier Park. No safe pedestrian here, so we're going to, we're going to fit it in a curb with a pedestrian sidewalk through this area. And then this will tie into Green Garden Road over on the east side, which would be the end of the project. Thanks. Oh, and one more here. This is just a typical, a typical picture of the, of the lighting fixture that we'll, we'll put along the, along the pathway on both sides of the street. I think everybody's seen those around, some different streetscapes we've done in the past. Okay, so that, that wraps up all the slides I have. I don't, if there's any comments that counsel wants to offer at this time, I'll be happy to take those.
Yeah, this is Mel with his phone. The lighting, will they be owned by the city and maintained by the city? Or would Pennalec have a responsibility to maintain and replace if needed?
Thanks for the question, Mel. That will be, that will be City of Erie owned and maintained lighting. We are working with Pennalec a little bit on some LED modifications to the Cobra heads that are out there. But all of the pedestrian lighting will be City of Erie.
Okay, another question. With the moving of the poles that may be sitting on the sidewalk and blocking ADA. Are we going to move, leave the poles and take some of the property of the property owner to widen that sidewalk? How are we going to do that?
All right, thank you. For that one, the poles are not being moved. They're, they're going to remain in their existing locations. So about every area I've looked at out there, there's adequate right of way. So we'll be able to fit adequate sidewalk around the pole on the, like on those north side poles, which is most of them out there with the concern. We'll make sure we have enough sidewalk on the north side to get around those. And I think the right of way exists to do so.
Okay, good. One more question regarding the trees that may be existing already. The older trees will grow into the power lines, which would cause problems during winter season or storm. The new planted seeds, will they grow to the point that they will grow into the lines? And with the existing situation, will we be removing those trees or how, what are we going to do with it?
No, no, all the trees that are there are slated to remain. On the north side, we're going to be putting in smaller species. I've, I've been working with the arborist for the city to select a couple of species that are going to grow in there and that would be appropriate. Something that's not going to get too big. I believe we've had, have it narrowed down to maybe three species or so. On the south side of the street, there are some existing trees, but they will all remain. There's the, one or, there's one giant one at Shriners that we have to work around. That remains. So I think, I think the tree concerns are all, are all addressed.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you very much. And hopefully when they select the trees, they take a look at how large will the roots grow? Because in many areas of our city, roots expand. They lift up the sidewalks and they do follow the water, which goes into individuals' sewer lines and basements. So I hope they keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Jason, thank you for mentioning that, that one tree. I believe that there was a, I think Shriners was going to take that down years ago. That's one of those giant trees in Pennsylvania, I think. So I noticed on the, on the plans that it does say preserve that tree. So thank you for mentioning that. I had kind of two questions because we've been getting questions about, you know, a bike lane. And Kathy Rosdick explained in an email to me that the active transportation plan, which we looked at last week, you know, the, there's a bike, you know, bike lanes on Sixth Street. So could you just kind of, I don't know if it's, if it would be a reassurance or maybe some people will be disappointed, but could you just talk about biking on Eighth Street? Just so we have, can inform the public about that. And then that kind of leads me to a second, maybe more of an observation. You know, you and I had talked about the homeowner in that one block on Eighth Street to remind people that this is also a residential neighborhood in addition to all those small businesses. You know, she's expressed concern about, as many of us have in various parts of the city, about speeding. And I'm wondering if, you know, a new streetscape helps in terms of traffic calming. I really liked those before and after pictures of Eleventh Street because it's something that you don't realize that there has been a change and an improvement until you, you showed it to us, you know. We forgot what it used to look like. So kind of two things, if you could talk about bikes or maybe Kathy can explain that to anybody from the public who is listening. And then just whether streetscapes in general help to convey that idea that you don't go speeding through the city of Erie. So maybe that's an editorial comment, but I'm kind of hoping that it'll work that way. So bikes and speeding.
Okay, thank you for the question. Sure. The engineering office did look at bike lanes, the corporation for the project, but ultimately decided against it for several reasons. The adequate shoulder availability, the numerous and wide driveways that exist throughout the corridor, limited roadway width with variable cross sections that are proposed, and then the on-street parking. We have, actually Kathy's office has been coordinating with Mill Creek Township on this project. And like the city, Mill Creek is not considering bike lanes on West Eighth Street. And for people that don't know, Mill Creek is currently looking into their own streetscape project on West Eighth Street, which will go on the other side of Pittsburgh Avenue and continue west to Peninsula Drive. and continue, uh, west to Peninsula Drive. And I think they're currently at the stage where they're looking for funding for that. Um, additionally, I think you mentioned this, but, uh, the, the, the bike route that's down on Sixth Street currently is, is, uh, described as the Pennsylvania Bike Route Z. And I believe it's also US Bike Route thirty. And, um, for that reason, um, we believe that that's the appropriate place for the actual, uh, designated bike lanes. Um, however, you know, the, the bikers are certainly welcome on West Eighth Street. Um, then your, your other question about the, the traffic, uh, occult, the traffic calming. Yeah, this project's going to address that because we're actually putting together a, a very extensive pavement marking, uh, plan, which is going to have, uh, pavement markings and, uh, some, some lane changes, some lane delineations. And so I think with, with that, uh, the, the actual speed limit out there is twenty-five. But I think with the, the pavement marking plans and the streetscape and the addition of the curbs, I think you're going to see an improvement um, on, on the, on the traffic situation.
Thanks, Jason.
Jason?
Yes?
Question, um, for the lighting, um, I'm guessing it's, uh, LED lighting. And is it similar fixture than on State Street? Cause I know when those were first put in, there was some issues with, um, foot candle levels at the, at the, uh, at, at the street level and, um, you know, the appearance of them. Any, any thoughts on that?
John, do you want to, do you have much on the State Street that you can comment on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. I, I know that the Illuminating Engineers Society has certain standards and part of the problem on State Street was that, that a lot of those sections were way overlit according to required standards for different uses and different, uh, roadway classifications. So on this particular project, we're, we're meeting, we, we did the photometric study as required. We're taking into account the, the Cobra lighting that's being converted to LED plus the new pedestrian LED lighting and meeting the, the required standards of, I believe, one point four foot candles at the ground.
Okay. Thank you.
In some areas, you know, people have become accustomed to, to an overlit situation, you know, and that just, you know, costs extra dollars and, uh, you know, that illuminating engineers have set their requirements for a reason. So, uh, as long as we meet those standards, we're okay.
Yep.
And Pendot agrees with that as well. That's what Pendot requires the same as what the IES requires.
Yeah, at State Street, I know they actually lit part of the building. So I fully understand what you're saying. Thank you.
No. Jason, I just, uh, if I could, Mr. President. Uh, once again, I know this has been a, West Eighth Street has been on the radar for many years. Uh, if you could, once again, just break down how the funding went and, uh, how the decisions were made with the project as a whole. Um, my understanding, it was strictly city. Pendot wasn't quite as involved as this at all.
Okay, sure thing. Thank you for the question. Yeah, the, um, I'll just, I'll give the figures, uh, again, uh, the, the total cost estimate is three point three million. Um, the state multimodal grant was, was, was two and a half million of that total, which was seventy percent. And then the city's matching funds, thirty percent of that three point three. And that, that equates to seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And as, as far as the project, this, the, um, original project was scoped as part of the, um, of multimodal, uh, grant application that the city, the city put in a few years ago. Um, and that's where the general work scope and such was, was submitted, um, uh, to the, to the state. And then we, um, you know, we were fortunate enough to receive the grant. Um, the, the project is actually, it's, it's a local project. It's a city project. But it is, it is being administered through the Pendot process. So, um, and, and that led into the whole situation with the virtual plans display on the Pendot website. Um, the Pendot comments, the Pendot reviews and, and Pendot will be involved, uh, the whole way through the project until the final closeout. If, if that helps answer your question.
Yes, it does. Uh, and I appreciate, uh, finally seeing improvements down there. Uh, I know, uh, there were some concerns from some of the neighbors. But I definitely got to believe, uh, between curbs and a uh, barrier there between the having a curb, the barrier, and then a sidewalks, definitely going to help for safety as well as, uh, addressing the telephone pole situation where, uh, those just happen to fall right in, right in line with the sidewalk. But as long as, uh, we can work around them literally, uh, I, I believe it's, you, it sounds like a great job and a good project to move forward on.
Uh, Mr. President. Uh, back to the bike, bicycle lane, biking lane. Um, will there be or is there parking on Eighth Street where the bike lanes will be? And my reasons for asking, if the car is parked from the driver's side to where, how many feet would the bike lane be? Unfortunately, I've seen a biker stand in the bike lane and the driver getting out of his driver's side. And of course he landed to the door and flipped over. And fortunately, he wasn't hurt bad. That's, that's the only scary part. Uh, I love the bike lane concept. I think it's good and I think we have to have it. But any other safety mechanisms, I don't know how many cars park on Eighth Street.
Well, this, thank you for the question. Um, actually, the, the bike lanes, uh, are, are not going on West Eighth. They're going to be down there, uh, West Sixth Street.
Sixth Street.
Oh, yeah. So, uh, but you bring up an excellent point because, uh, that was one of the things that, that concerned us was the, um, on-street parking, which is especially evident, uh, on the east and west side of, of Lincoln. Um, it extends about a block in each direction, maybe not quite a block each, each way at that intersection. So I think that's a valid concern. That's one of the things that, that, that concerned us also. Thank, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jason, one other question. Can you just let people know, you, you know, you, you explained Pendot's involvement. But what is the deadline for people to comment? And then even though it's a Pendot site, the city of Erie will, um, you know, absorb or evaluate those comments. So if we can just remind people, I think there was concern about that they wouldn't have time to comment, but I, I don't know what the deadline is now. So if you could just let the public know and us too, I guess.
Okay, thanks, Liz. Um, actually, uh, Pendot had, had told me that the comment period was going to close on February twelfth, uh, but I checked this morning and the plans are still up, the page is still up and the comment button is still up. And I even went in and, 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 and did a, a trial to submit a comment myself. And it, it still appeared like it would take comments. So I think the public can certainly still go on there and, 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 uh, and try to do that. And if it doesn't work, uh, they could certainly relay those comments to the city engineer's office. And, uh, we'll still take those comments as we work through final design and, uh, and get the project out the door. So the, 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 the door's still open to get those comments into us. But, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Jason, just one other, one other question. There will be on-street parking on both
You got feedback, sir. I, you got a lot of feedback.
Jason, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, question, both north and south side on-street parking?
No, um, it, wha- what we're looking at or, or which areas actually, uh, there's a need for on-street parking. And in particular, it's going to be in around Lincoln. Uh, as you know, there's a lot of businesses in there, restaurant. Uh, there will be on-street parking at those places that need it. But as you progress down to some different blocks, uh, they have off-street parking available. They have adequate parking lots and driveways. And in those areas, um, uh, no, there will be, it will not be provided for. Um, but we are taking a close look at that because we don't want to leave anybody out that, that, that has a need there. But I think we have a good plan for all that. Thank, thank you for the question.
Are we wrapped up here? Am I still muted?
No, you're.
Oh, I'm good. All right. Jason, thank you very much. Informative as always. Good job. Uh, anything else for the good order? Michael, anything? No, okay.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, it was a good job. Uh, any comments on anything else on the agenda?
Ed, we have, um, our firefighters with us today. I asked them to come to caucus.
Super, yeah.
We have, uh, Darren Hart, who's going to talk with us and, uh, Thomas Mychek, who, um, has, right, thank you.
Yeah, look. Mr. Hart, you're on wherever you are.
Good evening, council. And thank you, uh, for giving it a little time to speak to you tonight. Um, I would like to propose a few, uh, I've spoken to you in the past about some of the issues we've been having with, uh, illegal burning and, and burning in general within the city. Um, uh, multiple calls over the last year from, uh, mostly from our elderly population kind of precipitated these, uh, potential changes. Uh, the most common thing that we heard from, uh, people were that, uh, especially during the hotter nights, they couldn't open their windows, uh, because the neighbor was burning. Uh, they didn't have air conditioning. They had respiratory issues. Um, and those, uh, we've got a lot of those calls. Uh, so we decided, I decided to, uh, I had a rather large list of potential changes. I've kind of little bit down to a few. Um, I, I think they're, they're common sense. Um, one, one may have a little bit of pushback, but I'd like to just present a couple of ideas to you tonight, uh, for some discussion and, and answer any questions that you might have. Uh, first and foremost, I think this is common sense. Uh, we, we'd like to not allow any kind of burning when winds are gusting or sustained at ten miles an hour. Um, I would, another thing, uh, people, uh, burn a lot of things in the city. Unfortunately, they burn their yard waste. They burn recyclables. They burn their garbage. Uh, we've had people burning wires to burn the insulation off so they can sell the copper. Um, treated, treated lumber creates a terrible smell. Um, so we, we deal with this all the time. Uh, basically, the only thing you're allowed to burn within the city is dry season firewood. And we would just like to add that to our quality of life ordinance number thirty-one. Spelling it out to people that the only thing you can burn within the city is dry season firewood. That's it. Uh, that eliminates any speculation about anything else. Uh, my third proposal, uh, may be the one that might get the most pushback. I have done a little research of, uh, uh, with different communities, uh, how they deal with burning. A lot of communities designate times for burning. One of the proposals I, I, I thought about, uh, Mondays through Thursdays, six PM to eleven PM to allow burning. Uh, weekends, uh, six PM to midnight. And, uh, that would be Friday through Sunday and any federally observed holiday. So that people could celebrate holidays. Uh, what this would do is A, give relief to some people, um, that are having issues with, with the burning. They, they know that burning must stop at a certain time. Um, it would also give our fire officers a definite parameter which they could work in. So if they showed up, then it got called out at twelve thirty. There's no speculation about whether you're allowed to burn or not. It stops at twelve. Um, if we gave them a little bit more rigid parameters, I think that, uh, that, you know, they feel who, to make their, uh, make their decisions a little bit easier. Um, fourth proposal, I would like to eliminate bonfires altogether within the city. Uh, bonfires are the larger fires. Those, uh, can't be within fifty feet of a residential structure and, uh, most city lots don't allow that anyway. I would just like to take that off the table altogether. So we don't have to, we, we rare, rarely deal with them anyway. Uh, so I figure we just remove that altogether. And, uh, lastly, um, right now, our, our only way to find, well, we have a couple of ways to find, uh, we, we do the quality of life ordinance. Uh, the most I can issue for a fine right now is twenty-five dollars. Uh, we could go the route of the district justice and, and issue citations, but, uh, they're so busy with a lot of other things. Uh, a burning thing is kind of low priority and, and wouldn't really get, uh, the attention that it needs. So I would, I'd like to create a sliding scale, uh, for fines. Um, if we're called out to your residence for illegal burning, that's considered your warning. If we come back, uh, then you'd be issued the twenty-five dollar, come back again, we'll double it to fifty, come back again, double to a hundred. And those are my proposals right now. Uh, unfortunately, uh, the base of this is the, there's a small amount of people within the city that do not obey the ordinances. They can ruin the neighborhood. Uh, they can, they, they, they make it tough on their neighbors. And they are ruining it for everybody else that really pays attention to the rules and, and, and are courteous to their neighbors. Uh, but I cannot ignore the, the, uh, considerable complaints that I get, especially from their elderly population. So these are just a, a few things that I, uh, I, I would wanted to present to you for maybe some possible discussion.
Thank you, Darren. It, uh, actually I know how hard you've been working on it. I said, what you're proposing makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Any answers from anybody here?
Yeah, Aaron, I wondered, um, you know, you mentioned, um, you know, the district justices being busy and we know that from, you know, the whole blighted property process, how stuff doesn't seem to get done there. But what has been, has been your experience with the tools that you have now in getting people to, I don't know, pay a citation or something? Do you know?
Most of the time, we try and just talk with the people. We've been, do reason with most people with, before issuing fines. Uh, but we do have some problems. I have issued, uh, several quality of life tickets which never get paid. Um, the next step is supposed to go to the district justice, but it's been a slow process, especially through COVID. We've not been able to, we've not been able to do things in an expeditious manner. So, uh, like I said, I, I don't have a, a real solid, uh, method to kind of get people's attention other than a twenty-five dollar fine. Um, and it, like I said, it rarely gets paid.
Yeah, I know. I think I, and one of the reasons I was asking that is because it's incumbent on us to, not just with your experience, but you know, to look at that quality of life because we really have high hopes for that. So it'll be, it would be helpful for us to know how in other regards, whether those quality of life tickets are backing up like a lot of, um, fines out there. So thanks for letting us know about that. And, uh, you know, part of this, it, uh, you know, we've, the city has been doing a great job, I think, in terms of outreach and, and storytelling. And I think that this will be another opportunity to educate people, um, about how to comply and how not to do stupid stuff that can end up, you know, causing a, a catastrophe. So thank you for, for your work on this.
And we did have, uh, uh, where, uh, I built a dug a pit in his yard, wanted to burn some branches and caught his neighbor's garage on fire. Uh, it was a windy day. He was about four feet away from the garage. Um, so, you know, we, little common sense goes a long way. Uh, another issue we do deal with is people that live in the county who have no burning regulations, move into the city. Um, they don't take the time to, to research what the ordinances are, and then they just act like they did in the, in the country. Uh, so we do go in, we try and talk to them. I like to give people a chance. I, I don't like to come in, uh, guns blazing. I like to give people a chance and just let, make them understand that people just, uh, they don't want to comply.
Yeah, um, a couple of questions. One, what defines a bonfire?
That is a, anything that's over, uh, three feet wide and two feet high. Um, those are usually your traditional pallets or, uh, you know, a large amount of, of, of wood. Um, anything under that is considered recreational fire and those are still permitted.
And are they going to be regulated by hours also?
The, um, recreational fires or the bonfires?
Recreational fires.
Yes, right now recreational fires are permitted. They're allowed, uh, you're allowed to have a recreational fire within twenty-five feet. Uh, they have to be over twenty-five feet away from red, uh, residential structure, occupied structure. We also permit, uh, outdoor fireplaces, portable outdoor fireplaces, and those are fifteen feet um, from an occupied structure. Those tend to be smaller and they have a screen on them. And those are the ones we really like to see because the fires don't get too big. They're, they're, and, and they have a screen to keep embers from flying.
Okay, thank you. This seems like three. Okay, thank you. It seems like three feet by two feet is still relatively small. I've seen some of these people build like, you know, I don't know what size they are, but they have the already custom fit, you know, uh, circular stones and things that, you know, that they, uh, put in their yards, and I don't know if those would be under or over three foot once you had those assembled.
Right, and we do, people do, uh, put some very nice, uh, ornate things in their yard, and, and that sometimes they do not, uh, you know, follow the guidelines, uh, of the International Fire Code. Um, I'm, I'm, my biggest concern is their distance from the, uh, occupied structure. Um, to me, a bonfire is a giant fire that requires, you know, a fire truck to be there, or, you know, portable water or whatever. Um, and we really, like I said, we don't have, uh, very many of those. Once in a while, we do get a request for that, but very seldom. Um, I'm just trying to, yeah, just eliminate that, those large fires, and, uh, right now, the recreational fires and the portable fireplaces are still open. Yes.
Yeah, just, uh, just have a, uh, positive statement. Uh, today I was, uh, riding the lift along with two individuals, uh, in a wheelchair that live at Friendship Towers. And we were talking about the fire, and, uh, my question to them was, uh, you, you're on the top floor, how you feel since there was a fire? And the lady just said, "Oh, we feel fine. The firemen have a system, they will get us out, we don't have no problem." And that's a compliment, uh, to our fire department, and I thank you for your job.
Thank you very much. I, I would like to say that, uh, that the third platoon did an outstanding job at that fire. I, I was called down to investigate the fire, I got there a little bit later afterwards, but they, they, um, had a lot of challenges which they overcame, and they, and they did a fantastic job, uh, getting that patient out and getting him, uh, they gave him every chance, uh, to, to survive, and, uh, unfortunately, he passed this morning, but, uh, uh, it wasn't for a lack of trying, those guys did a ma, the guys and girls did a magnificent job.
Super. Anything else, folks?
So, Ed, um, with approval of council, would it be alright if Darren, um, tweaked those ordinances for us so we could pass them along?
Most definitely. Common sense, I think.
Okay. Thank you very much. I will, I will work on something official that I can get to, to council, uh, and we can, we can get that process moving now.
Thanks, Darren.
Okay, thank you all so much, have a great night.
Okay. How about Mr. Matic, you there? Kathy?
Yes, he's, he's on now.
Okay.
Hi, yes, uh, my name is Thomas Mychek, I am the Secretary of the, uh, Firefighters Pension Board. And, uh, we have an ordinance on your agenda, an amendment to an ordinance on your agenda for this evening. Um, we're just basically, uh, trying to remove one sentence, um, out of the ordinance uh, that we felt didn't make a whole lot of sense, and I guess, uh, I don't know if anybody has any questions about it, or if you want me to explain it, or what you'd like me to do.
You want to explain it? Explain it, please, Tom.
Sure, um, so, try to be as quick as I can. Um, any firefighter that was in the military, active military service, um, has the, uh, option or the benefit, I guess, to, uh, buy back his active military time into the pension fund. Um, so in other words, if, uh, he was in the military for five years, it's a five-year maximum. If he was in the military for five years, um, and then he joined the Erie Fire Department, he can pay, uh, money into the fund and essentially buy those five years to count as service time towards his pension. So maybe instead of working 15 years, uh, he would have the option of, uh, or instead of working the full 20 years for his full pension, uh, he would only have to work the 15 years. Um, there is a provision, and the pension board isn't really sure why it's in there. Um, and this is what we're trying to get, uh, removed, that says no participant may purchase, uh, credit for military time um, with respect that he or she has already purchased similar credit under any other pension plan in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Um, that's what we're getting, it removed. Um, so basically, if you bought your military time in another pension plan in the state of Pennsylvania, uh, we're not allowing you to do it in the Erie Firefighters Pension Plan. Now, if you were, were at a pension plan in Ohio or New York, it would be perfectly fine. Um, and that's kind of what brought us to, uh, wanting to make this change.
Clarifications, everybody okay?
Uh, Tom, the only question I have, and I know it in our, I don't know if yours is that's doing the kickback.
I'm sorry.
Um, does the police department have the same, their union have the same provision in theirs, you know?
I believe so. I believe, uh, both the police and the ONE Pension Fund have similar provisions.
I think, uh, I'm making trouble with this, it keeps on muting.
President Brzezinski, your line continues to echo for the others who are in council chambers. Uh, so unfortunately, you'll just have to keep an eye on that mute button if you'd like to speak.
Thank you, Francis. Maybe I should put you on the one.
I'm just gonna say that, uh, I'm not saying I'm for or against it, but I know Pennsylvania is really regulated state, but it has those provisions, uh, for a lot of the regulated segments like, you know, teachers not being able to go teach again and collect their pensions and things like that if they were drawing it, you know, from, from the state, but I don't think this should be a problem if it's coming from the US government. But Mr. Brzezinski can attest to probably some of those regulations.
Actually, the, uh, school district, the teachers have a, uh, I don't know, I guess, uh, a couple sentences in there saying that you can never buy more than a year in a year. So folks that, uh, took summer jobs, as an example, with, say, the state, normally they could have bought that time back and added it to their teacher pension. Uh, they don't allow that. They allow you one year for a year. So, if you worked someplace else before you started, you could buy that time, but the other way, they don't. Uh, tell you what, we can't do enough to help the folks that go into burning buildings or dodge shotguns all day long. So I have no problem with that one. Any other questions?
I have no problem with it either, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Moon.
Is there, um, Ed Betts, is there a financial impact from this that has anybody figured how often that would occur?
Uh, my understa, there is a small financial impact. Um, I don't have the exact dollar amount, but it is not anything of any, uh, significance. My understanding is there are two, uh, firefighters at the present time that this could potentially affect.
And how do other municipalities in Pennsylvania do it? You, I mean, that's a broad question, but do you know if are we the outlier, or?
I, I am not, uh, well-versed on all other municipalities, that's a very broad question, but to, I, I'm not, it's not completely new to me. I have not seen this provision in other municipal, um, pension agreements. I don't have any objection to the, any legal objection to the proposal from the fire department. Um, it does serve as a benefit, um, to the members of the department, uh, and it has really, uh, a, a very minimal cost.
Thanks.
I imagine maybe Tom had researched that, Liz, when he was, uh, looking into putting that together. Tommy, still there?
I, I am, um, I don't necessarily know how many other municipalities, um, have a similar ordinance. Uh, I guess I kind of share Mr. Betts's view that I haven't really come across it a whole lot. The only other thing that I would say is that we did research to make sure that it wasn't a foul of any Pennsylvania Third Class City Code or, or, uh, any other reason why that would be in there, um, pension-wise. We cleared it with the Pension Board Attorney, and he didn't have any issues, um, w- with removing the language.
Hey, thank you. What do we have for time here? We still have a few minutes, it's 7:23. We get rolling at 7:30, so, does anybody have anything else? If not, maybe we'll take a five-minute break?
Something else on the agenda?
Anything else on the agenda? I'd ask about that. Michael? Sure, go ahead. Oh, go ahead. We have a few minutes, sort things out. One of the things I always think about throwing out is the idea of maybe going to one meeting in June and July, uh, rather than the two. Uh, school boards usually go to one meeting in, in the summer. I'd have to get, you know, ask Mayor Schember what he thinks of it, and the ladies that work upstairs. But, uh, sometimes it makes sense to not over-meeting ourselves. Just, just a thought for the good. Yeah, a couple.
As the financial person, um, I don't know if we can do that because of the, uh, things that, um, the purchase orders and that, that have to go through.
Okay, but that's why I'm throwing it out. I would imagine that, uh, if they know they have the purchase order, if we say, I, I'm just throwing it out as an idea. If we met the second week, either the middle week of every, of those two months, if we would have it covered, or if there wasn't, you know, if there were an emergency, I'd have to call another meeting, I guess. I'm just, I'm not trying to dodge work, but I'm not trying to make work for us either. Just a thought for the good.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I have another I want to bring up, is I, uh, I sent that email out about waive the rules for the Historic Preservation Ordinance on the agenda. And I know, uh, thank you Kathy Ross, that she had followed up with, uh, some more detail on that. Um, I wasn't sure if there was any, uh, questions from council to, um, uh, to discuss this, or, uh, if there's any discussion needed. And, and I believe Kathy's still on the, on the line if there's any questions.
Reason for the, uh, wave rules, I didn't get a chance to read through, uh, what she said. You know, I guess the only reason would be that, you know, the grant has a, uh, sunset period that's gonna happen before March 3rd.
Did you want me to speak to that?
In the works.
Yes, Mr. President, Kathy.
Sure, yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, yeah, thank you, thank for that, that question. Um, I sent an email out, like, like Dave said, uh, just right before the meeting, so maybe not everyone had a chance to, to read it. The, um, the ordinance amendment that's before you is critical to our ability to become a certified local government, and the grant that Mr. Keys had mentioned is, or is a grant that has been approved by the state conditional on our, uh, our ability to become a CLG community. Um, so it's the grant deadline, we're not sure exactly when the, uh, the State Historic Preservation Office will make their final determination, but we have to be a CLG community when we get the master agreement for that grant, and that's gonna happen anytime between the end of March, it could be early April. So we just wanted to continue to move this forward. Um, we had, we had met with council many times. It didn't seem like anyone had any significant issues. Planning Commission has approved the ordinance amendment, and because it's part of the zoning ordinance, there was actually a longer period of which public could comment, uh, than you would normally have with ordinances that become before you, and you also had a public hearing. So we felt that it was just, and we were about, about two weeks set behind our, what we had, uh, originally scheduled because of that little snafu of not moving it from the public hearing onto the next available city council. So this would catch us up to what we had originally planned was our schedule. Um, so in my email, I said, "I'm not sure, it completely jeopardizes our grant." Um, but what I can tell you is that the schedule that we had proposed to State Historic Preservation Office back in December, we said, "Hey, we think this is the process by which we can get all of this done." Um, they looked at that and said, "If you, if you meet all of those deadlines, we're pretty sure you'll, you'll be qualified to get the grant." And they have approved the grant, like I said, but with the condition that we get our CLG certification, and this is one of two things that have to happen in order for us to get a CLG certification.
Kathy, what kind of money is that?
The, uh, it's $25,000, it's the, but it's the maximum of that grant. Uh, so we did ask, we did request for the, the full $25,000. If we, if we don't get the grant, what happens, and the grant was gonna be used to, um, to hire a preservation planner who will then work to onboard the Historic Review Commission, to do the, uh, uh, preservation plan, uh, to work with homeowners, we need that person in place. So if we don't get the grant, that means we don't do that work for another year until the grant becomes due again, or becomes open again.
Will that person be?
You're gonna hire somebody for 25? I'm sorry, Mrs. Moon, go ahead.
Would that, uh, person be hired out of Erie?
Yes, it would be, it would be someone for, working with the city of Erie.
Okay.
At 25,000?
No, that's, that would, the city would, would match that with the funding to get to, uh, I'm not exactly sure what the salary range is, I think it's in the, in mid 40s.
Kathy, we made a real tough decision last meeting when we would not waive the rules for those two properties on West Second Street. And we're attempting to maybe do that again, and you know my feelings on it. If you've been working on this thing since last whatever, then we should have been more aware of it, and we should have had it on the docket. Final reading could have been today. I'm not blaming anybody. Uh, I just don't understand how the, you know, I know you spent a lot of time, I've never seen a 10-page ordinance before, uh, with the detail of no ATMs. That was Mr. Keys, that wasn't me, but I'm just saying, I know, you don't like it when anybody asks you a question, but, uh, I'm, I have to ask that question, because people can ask us, "If you didn't do it last time, why are you gonna do it now?"
Again, it was, this is the same problem that, that we tried to explain last time in waiving the rules. It's not blaming the administration, it was city council that didn't move it from the public hearing to the agenda. And I want to point out today's paper, um, Gerard Looks Back to Spur Its Future. And it's what, um, the borough of Gerard, which has a lot of empty storefronts, we've stressed that historic preservation is economic development, it makes it work. And Ed, you were not on council when we created the Historic Preservation Task Force. They completed their work, people who were not paid to come in and start from scratch to build this, so, um, no one's trying to slip anything through the cracks or under the door. Um, I think, I would like my colleagues on council to pay respects to the work that previous council members, including Kaz Kwiatowski, who had a huge interest in historic preservation, did in supporting the historic task force. This is the next step that has to happen. And if Gerard can recognize that, the story in today's paper talked about Waterford, it talked about Northeast, it talked about Gerard, it talked about Lawrence Park. We, I mean, there's, uh, pursuing, uh, different types of designations. Gerard wants to go and, and get the entire, uh, downtown declared a, uh, historic district, which is what happened in Lawrence Park, but the ability to be able to get grants, to be able to, uh, preserve buildings, to hire people who can do that preservation work is so important, so.
Hey, we're running out of time here now, Liz, sorry.
President, I have one, one point here real quick.
We're out of time. We're out of time. Go ahead.
I was just going to say that we did try to have the council study sessions and try to lay out the schedule, to try to clarify when things are needed. You know, this did come up and there were some snafus with the, with the putting on the agenda. But we tried to carefully, you know, lay out the council and give everybody plenty of time to kind of digest information because it is pretty complex. So I just wanted to at least note that, that, you know, that this did come up. There were some different things we'd get on the agenda, but I, I appreciate all the support and all the information that's been given to, given to us.
Thank you. Shall we leave the caucus and begin our regular meeting, Larry? Straight in? Roll them. My gavel.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, February 17th, 2021 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, and Mr. Witherspoon. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and a prayer.
Does anybody have a moment of silence coming?
I, I wanted to recognize Reverend Floyd Lewis, who died for his work with Youth Leadership Institute and his ministry.
Michael's prayer first?
Yes, sir.
Dear Heavenly Father, we'd just like to say, first of all, just thank you for getting us here through the storm and through all the rigors of the week. And just ask that you stay with us, that you enhance our abilities to govern this municipality. We just ask for, praise for all the people who are bereaved and all those who are suffering in the less fortunate. We just ask that in your name. Amen.
Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to accept the minutes from the February 3rd, 2021 city council meeting and bills for payment on February 19th. The sound of the Brennan will be issued and the shot.
That's why we couldn't hear. Do you want me to go again?
No, we're good. He went to.
Lori, yes, you'll, you'll need to go again. I don't think other people caught what you were saying.
Okay, motion to accept the minutes from the February 3rd, 2021 city council meeting and bills for payment on February 19th and 26th, 2021. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Key, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Brzezinski. We don't have any repository questions and answers tonight. So this would take us to public comments. And I would like to remind the citizens to please state your address and limit it to five minutes.
Eric Brazel?
Hello?
Hello.
Oh, hey, I want to thank you for taking time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and the community. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Eric Brazel. I'm a lifelong bicyclist. I'm an activist here locally. I've been trying to encourage the city of Erie to become a more bicycle-friendly place. So when I first heard about this West State Street project, I was very excited. It said multimodal. And to me, multimodal means three things. There's motor vehicles, of course, and pedestrian and bicycles. And it is a, a business district that connects to a lot of places. It starts at our wonderful park at Frontier Park. And there's a hospital there, the numerous businesses, there's a school there and all that sort of stuff. But the most important thing is that this is, has a potential for people not in motor vehicles to get someplace, to get to the businesses and all the other elements. So I immediately could see the excitement and the positive elements to that, so. I, I listened to Mr. Thayer's earlier on and, and I'm not a professional planner, but you know, there is parking on the street in the Lincoln area on that. Most all the businesses have their own parking. So I, from probably a block or two west of Lincoln, there is no car parking there whatsoever. And it's a wide street and it just seems like it has good possibilities. I mean, all this other stuff that's being done is definitely positive. I mean, having the trees and the lighting and all that sort of stuff is definitely going to help that, that area. But, but, and also the comment about Sixth Street, it's, it's a substandard bike lane at best. I mean, yes, it does have designations from the state and the, the federal transportation, but it's very substandard. Most people are pretty nervous going over there. And, you know, we don't have that much protected lanes in our city. And as a bicycle activist, people will come to me. I would bike more, but. And that but is because they're concerned about the car traffic. We don't do much in the city as far as traffic calming. And, you know, but the really, the big thing, if you want to get people biking, you want to get them out of their homes, out into the community, a proper protected bike lane is the way to do it. And presently, Pennsylvania has 11 bicycle-friendly communities. Many of these communities have been bicycle-friendly communities for an excess of 10 years, probably getting on to 15 years for some of them. I think the first one might have been Philadelphia. It's a city with very narrow streets. Likewise with Pittsburgh, very narrow streets there. We don't have that problem in Erie. We have wide streets and we can make better use of our asphalt space. So that's really probably about the the main thing that I have. But the, the big thing is for business districts to have a bike lane in it. I mean, for me, I own two motor vehicles. I prefer, my preferred vehicle is a bicycle. It's relaxing for me. It's easy. I can get there around the city. I can really get there really faster than I can with a car, so. But the big thing is I sent a one link, but if you search out business districts and bike lanes, you can pick any article that you want. It's going to tell you. And that's what we paid for many studies over the past 34 years. And that's what a lot of those studies have told us. But we really haven't taken very much action on it. So I hope that we reconsider bringing some elements into that. It just seems like an opportunity that could be missed. Thank you very much, people.
Thank you.
In the order of registration, it would go Lori Edwards.
I wasn't going to speak at this time. I'm waiting for the West Second Street properties.
There won't be discussion during the meeting, I don't believe.
Well, would you like me to speak about it now, then?
Probably a good idea, Lori, make sure.
Okay, well, I really thank you for letting me speak then. Pertaining to the PE Holdings project, proposed project at the 842 or 824, 826 West Second Street. I want to first start out by saying that when anyone plans to build a new structure, the common sense and lawful thing to do is first make sure it conforms to our zoning ordinances. There seems to be a large lack of consideration to these ordinances in the design of this proposed project by its placement, size, and overall design. This project proposes a nine-unit building squeezed into two sites that were each had a one-story or each, each site had a one house, which was a two-story salt box styled home. And also this style is what the adjacent and surrounding homes have in the area. The zoning ordinances that are being ignored by this proposed project are 306.20, which states when an area involved, forms an integral part of, is immediately adjacent to or otherwise clearly affects the future of any established area, the design, scale, and location on the site shall enhance, rather than detract, from the character and specifically the value and attractiveness of the surroundings. Also, another ordinance that comes into play is 306.21, where buildings or structures located along strips of land or in a single site and not part of a unified multi-building complex shall strive to achieve visual harmony with the surroundings. Pertaining more to harmony is ordinance 306.23, which states harmony shall be achieved through the proper consideration of scale and proportions. Another instance of not being in a zoning ordinance is concerning the infringement on the established existing properties. An ordinance that affects the immediate neighbors is 306.40, which carefully consideration should be given to preservation of natural vistas and bluff views shall be preserved. It is easy for anyone to see that this project does not take into consideration any of these zoning ordinances. Also, you have heard from numerous people, especially those living in the immediate area, who disapprove of this project. I know a lot of you campaigned for your seat on council by using the platform of let your voices be heard or vote for me, I will be your voice. So I would respectfully would like to say to council members that the citizens have spoken and we disapprove of this project. And please do your duty for your citizens and vote no for this project. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Well said, Lori. Thank you.
Can I have your address, please?
She's spoken before. We probably have her on file.
It's 111 Plum.
James Greenfield?
Go ahead, Esquire. Am I muted again?
No, you're good. Mr. Greenfield, there's a mute button that you have to hit on your side.
Okay, now I think you've got me. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you again for, and again, I'm here to speak on A24 to A28 West Second, that conditional use application. And I want to thank you again for considering the concerns of neighbors who want to preserve the the design integrity and the views of the historic West Bayfront community. We also know that you've received letters from a number of residents who were opposed to this conditional use application because of its adverse impact on the community. And we appreciate your consideration of the letters from those who are not speaking tonight. Proponents of this plan have suggested that residents who oppose the application simply don't want development on the property. But that's simply not true. We recognize that the owners of the property have development rights and the property certainly will be developed at some point. But you're not presented tonight with a binary choice between the P E R E plan that is before you and no development at all. We can walk and chew gum at the same time here. And what I mean by that is we can have development that proves to be an asset and at the same time respects the integrity of the West Bayfront community and substantially complies with the zoning ordinance. This is not the right plan for this property because it is too intensive and because it unfairly burdens neighboring properties. Regardless of changes that the developer has made to hit, to the plan that he originally presented to the city, the structure is too large for such a narrow lot. Any structure on this property is going to have bay views from its north side. But by moving the structure 70 feet further than code would permit from West Second Street, this developer wants to seize better views from the, from the bluff for his tenants while obstructing the views of other properties on Plum and West Second Streets. This is gratuitous and completely unnecessary as an imposition on the neighborhood. And for that reason, in addition to the provisions that Lori Edwards mentioned in the zoning ordinance a few moments ago, this plan violates Section 305 of the zoning ordinance because it does not meet the priority objective of preserving the integrity of existing development on the street, most of which has been there for more than 100 years. Another factor to consider is stormwater management, which will be very difficult for such a large structure on such a small site, and fire protection. The further the building is located from West Second Street, the more difficult it will be for emergency equipment to get access to it. In previous meetings, we have outlined for you how the property can be developed on the south side, on the south side of the property in a manner that does not interfere with anyone's views, sunlight, or air. Developer can do this the right way, but he has chosen not to. Because of LRTA, someone will develop this property responsibly if this developer will not. It's going to happen sooner or later. Years ago, John Calabrese, former owner of this property, considered a plan to develop four units on it on the north side, near the edge of the bluff. But the city was so protective of the edge of the bluff and the integrity of existing property interests that Mr. Calabrese understood that he could never get such a plan approved. And so he refrained from pursuing it. We urge you to apply those very same protective instincts tonight and reject P E R E's conditional use application. Thanks again for your attention to this.
Thank you, sir.
Robert Sprickman, I'm not sure which username you have, you have two logged in, so I'll try them both. Hello?
Go ahead, Rob.
Okay, my name's Robert Sprickman. I live at 111 Plum Street. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I have been on the telephone with several members of the council and I've enjoyed my conversations with them. I'm a retired social studies teacher and so I have I'm a retired social studies teacher and so I have beliefs about what city council should be responsible for, and that would be to represent its citizens and protect the rights of those same people and to focus on fairness. I'm speaking to you today about the same issues that the last two speakers have been talking about, and that is the development on West Second Street in the eight hundred block and for that matter, the nine hundred block. Any traditional neighborhood development should reflect the needs of that neighborhood and not stress the safety of the residents and the infrastructure by adding congestion and traffic issues. And also parking limitations are one of the big problems in this area. Infill development has but one goal, and that is to get it done and then to move on. Stopping this development will lead to more appropriate development at a later date. So, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Peter Frisina? Frisina?
Frisina. Thank you. I am, my name's Pete Frisina. I am with Agresti Real Estate. I am a realtor. I represent the sellers Kathy and Danny Dollkemper on this property. It just drives my mind crazy to hear these people, like James Greenfield said, that the properties will be sold and developed. How does he know that? How does he know that? I have had this property on the market for two years and gotten very little hits on it. So if he thinks it, why didn't he, why didn't he put an offer in to buy it? Or Jan Ferguson put in an offer to buy it? If they think this thing is going to be sold, then, you know, it, they don't know. They don't know that it's going to be sold. It may be sold 10 years from now. Danny and Kathy bought it 13 years ago with the intention of building their own house on it, but they bought another piece of property and so they're going to get rid of this. They bought it from John Calabrese. So if John Calabrese had this great deal to put a house in there, why didn't he do it? And why did he sell the property? I don't know. Nobody knows. It went through the zoning board. The zoning board voted on it and they said yes. They looked at the, the zoning board has all these zone things, zoning ordinance, and they've run it through the property and he did everything. Back in 2009, when I first listed this property, I would keep getting phone calls from somebody, some, from some guy that was a neighbor, who kept on saying, tell Dollkemper's to mow the grass. Tell Dollkemper's to mow the grass before we call the city and and report him to the city. I had to block this guy. I had to tell him quit calling me and I had to block his phone number from my phone. All right? So then, Jan Ferguson in January posts on Facebook to have people call in and come to this public meeting. And this, and I'm reading this from her Facebook post, but you need to only scroll down to page thirty-six referencing the plans that were submitted to the zoning board for an in-depth study of the Dollkemper connection and their request and plans for this property. Well, for Jan Ferguson, they were only selling the property. They had nothing to do with the plans. They had nothing to do with the project. They're only the owners of the of the lot, and that's all they're doing is selling the lot to a developer. So she posts that in January. And then two weeks ago, neighbor Bob to the city council, when you guys were discussing the protocol if to vote on something that wasn't on the agenda, neighbor Bob comes in and says, well, something unusual is going on here. He said, maybe you're receiving pressure from the county executive because it's her property and she's going out of office and wants to collect. Wants to collect what? The county executive had no indicate, did not pressure anybody. She has had no communication with any members of council, any member of the zoning board, any members of the planning commission. She has stayed away simply for that reason, because she didn't want any, her name brought up, that she influenced anybody for the decision on this property. But I don't know. I think this is a smoking gun thing that this is, that this is, all this stuff about blocking of views, air quality, parking and everything like that, I think it's a smoking gun, my opinion. And so the only thing I got to say is this developer has done all that he needs, all he's been asked to do and more. He even asked Mr. WeatherSpoon, Mr. Keys, for minority contractors' names so that they could work on this project. I don't know what more you want from this guy. He has done everything. The zoning board approved the project. Apparently, they, the project must have met all the ordinances of the zoning. So I just hope, thank you for your time. Thank you for all your work you've done. It's not an easy job that you're in, but I appreciate you guys being there for us. Have a good evening. Thank you a lot.
Thanks, Pete. Who do we have, Frank?
Darlie, Daria Marrella. Sorry, I got a little tongue tied.
Hi. So I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I guess I have a little echo. I'm going to turn it now. Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
So I wasn't planning on speaking tonight until Mr. Frisina spoke out. First of all, Jim Greenfield is an attorney representing the neighborhood hired by Jan Ferguson. Jan Ferguson does not, in fact, have a Facebook page. And I've been in management, I've worked a lot of different jobs, but if I had an employee that had a personal vendetta against Jan Ferguson, the way Mr. Frisina presents every meeting, he attacks Jan Ferguson, that is the only name he brings up. And quite frankly, as a neighborhood, we are tired of being attacked for something that we know as living here for 30 and 40 years is not a good project. And you know what, Liz? I can see the look on your face. I know you're not happy about this, but I think that Pete Frisina is an embarrassment to Agresti Real Estate.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. That's not your personal area.
You know that I spoke to you on the phone. This project doesn't fit. He can change the project and it'll work. Our neighbors want development, but if anyone can't see that this is redlining in this area, I, I don't know how, yeah, 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 Liz, it's redlining. You can say whatever you want, but this is redlining at its finest. And if you can't see the attack Mr. Frisina puts on Jan Ferguson every single time, I can't believe that Brian Agresti is not embarrassed. Our neighborhood has been preserved because we take care of each other. You don't live there and you, you know what? I can see the looks on everybody's faces. I called every single one of you. The only person that called me back was one council member. And yes, Mr. WeatherSpoon did at one point, and I guess Michael did early on, too. Haven't heard from anyone else. Left you messages. I have not heard from anybody. Mr. Przyzynski, you must have six messages from me. Nothing. I know, you know, Mayor Shember, I understand that you want this project pushed through. That's what you told me on the phone, your words. I will see this go through. But you know what? This is our city and we have a right to watch out for what is happening in a historic neighborhood that used to be called Bay Rat Territory. And now you've, you know, given it a little gentrified name, the West Bayfront, and we appreciate that. But if you can't see that this is redlining at its finest, I don't, I don't even know where your, where your heads are. And I'm cutting this off, but thank you so much and thank you for your time. And hopefully that in the future, when you receive phone calls from citizens, I know you must get a million, call us back. And I appreciate your time. Have a great night.
Carrie Church?
Good evening all. I live at 108 Plum across the street from where the the project's going to be developed. And all I would ask is for each of you to picture yourself at your back sliding glass door that overlooks your backyard or at your kitchen window and imagine six feet from that glass, a three-story apartment building being built. I would put my house on that Mr. Frisina would fight like hell if this was going up six feet from his back door. I just want you to picture what this is going to do to six neighbors in this neighborhood. And like it's been said a million times, we're not against development. A three-story building, six feet from your window, from your sliding glass door, whatever backyard you have, all of a sudden, gone. So please, when you're thinking about this project, just consider that. Put, have some empathy. Put yourself in these people's shoes that have lived here for a long time and think what that would do to your, your quality of life. Okay? And that's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Council President, that is all.
Okay. Thanks, folks. Getting on with the agenda. Ms. Watson?
Council File Number 16203, Ordinance Number Eight, 2021, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. This contribution is from the Mercy Terrace Apartments for the purchase of police, fire, and winter maintenance equipment. Sponsored by Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Ms. Allen, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16203, and now known as Official File Ordinance Eight, 2021, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. WeatherSpoon, Mr. Przyzynski. City Council passes Official File Ordinance Eight, 2021 by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16204, Official File Ordinance Nine, 2021, an ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Erie, Pennsylvania. Sponsored by Mr. Przyzynski, seconded by Mrs. Schaff, that Council File Number 16204, and now known as Official File Ordinance Nine, 2021, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. WeatherSpoon, Mr. Przyzynski. City Council passes Official File Ordinance Nine, 2021 by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16205, Official Ordinance Number Ten, 2021, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $200,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. This contribution is from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Department of Community and Economic Development for the Strategic Management Planning Program. Sponsored by Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Ms. Allen, the Council File Number 16205, and now known as Official File Ordinance Ten, 2021, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. WeatherSpoon, Mr. Przyzynski. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Ten, 2021 by yea seven, nay zero. Okay. This is Council First Reading. Council File Number 16206, Amending Official Ordinance Number Eighty, 2005, and Amendments thereto, codified under Part 13, Article 1303, Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Erie, Pennsylvania, Article Six of the Zoning Ordinance, by amending the definitions of the terms bottle club, commercial recreation, and eating and drinking establishment, defining the terms after-hours club, dance club, identifying the zoning districts in which these businesses, entities can be located, and amending Article Three, Section 30525 of the Zoning Ordinance to prohibit alcohol beverages. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mrs. Schaff, the Council File Number 16206, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff.
Mr. President? Just one question. If we have any facilities existing currently, will they be grandfathered?
They would not be.
They would have to close up, change, whatever?
They would need, they would need to comply with the zoning ordinance.
Okay, will they be notified?
Yes.
Okay. I'm satisfied. Thank you.
I, I think that this is overly broad and especially Article Three to, to not, to prohibit alcoholic beverages. I think we're going to find out that this is going to affect a lot of places that, or should affect if we enforce it across the boards, a lot of places that we like to go and places that, you know, places of worship that have halls that they rent for weddings and things like that. And I don't know specifically how we're going to get around that if we're not going to allow alcohol. You could say if I rent this room to have my wedding. Just something to throw out there that I think that maybe it's a little short-sighted, but it's just one person's opinion.
Mr. President, good point, Mr. Councilman Keys. I didn't think of that. An example, I guess, before the pandemic, I tend to function at St. James Place. It wasn't a bring your own bottle, but they were able to provide alcohol beverages. Would that affect them, which is their, part of their business to raise money for their school?
It would not appear that they would qualify as a bottle club under that, under your hypothetical.
Okay, thank you very much.
Should I call for the vote again?
And I understand that that's not the primary business of a school or church, but if you allow them to operate under the same guidelines as these other places operate, even if it's on a temporary basis, I think that, I'm not sure that's completely fair.
The bottle clubs become a problem because of timing, too. You know, they're going two, three, four o'clock in the morning, and that's, that's another issue.
Those are all well-taken points. I'm for a lot of the things and definitely for the portions that we put forth earlier this year in order to rein in the bottle club operations and especially in residential neighborhoods.
Michelle?
I know at St. James Place, when I participate, like with the festival, we have to get a special license on, like on our festival days to have beer or whatnot.
We Polish people at Holy Trinity don't, don't drink, so we don't have to do that for, for Zabala.
I'm going to take the vote again. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. WeatherSpoon, Mr. Przyzynski. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 162006 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Okay, Council File Number 16207, an ordinance amending the City of Erie zoning ordinance, ordinance number eighty, 2005, by amending Article Six, definitions to include new definitions and By Amending Article 6, Definitions To Include New Definitions, And Amending Article 7, Historic Resource Protection In Its Entirety.
Mr. President. I'd like to propose to waive the rules for this ordinance. Is that okay to say that now?
No, we're voting that down. Way of the rules to be for your second reading.
Mr. President, I thought we the rules always come last.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this is Ed Betsa. Just so we're clear, then what you're voting on is the first reading. After we're done with that, Mr. Brennan will be making a request to vote on the second. But you're just voting right now on the first reading only.
I think we're ready to vote.
This is sponsored by Ms. Allen, Seconded by Kathleen Schaff. The Council File Ordinance 16207, Having Been Read Is Hereby Adopted On First Reading By City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.
No.
Mr. Brzezinski. City Council Read And Adopts City Council File Ordinance 16207 By Yea, Six, Nay, One On First Reading. Now, from my understanding, I'm waiting till the end to do the.
That's correct.
Okay. Council File Number 16208, An Ordinance Amending The Codified Ordinances Of The City Of Erie, Part 1, Administrative Code Title 7, Employment Provisions, Pensions, Article 149, Firefighters Pension Fund By Amending Section 104, 14901, F. F. Regarding The Purchase Of Prior Military Service, Specifically To Eliminate The Prohibition Of Such A Purchase If There Has Been A Purchase For The Same Period In Another Plan. Sponsored by Mrs. Schaff, Seconded by Ms. Allen, The Council File Ordinance 16208, Having Been Read Is Hereby Adopted On First Reading By City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council Read And Adopt Council File Number 16208 By Yea, Seven, Nay, Zero On First Reading. Frank, can you do anything about that?
I have to mute Council President Brzezinski for that. So just be aware.
Okay, this takes us to new business.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Michelle, one second. Any separations?
Yeah.
I'd like to separate number one and number two on new business.
Witherspoon, did you have one? Am I muted again? I don't know. Any other separations, new business? Hearing none, let's move forward.
Voting on the resolution.
No, voting on the remainder, I think, aren't we?
Yeah. Voting on the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Witherspoon, And Mr. Brzezinski. This is number one, pursuant to the provisions of zoning ordinance 80, 2005, In A Public Hearing Held On January 20th, 2021, A Request For Waterfront Conditional Use Submitted By P.E. Real Estate Holdings LLC For Construction Of A 10-Unit, 3-Story, Multiple-Family Dwelling Located At 946 West 2nd, Parcel ID 4038114. The Property Being In The W.R. Waterfront Residential District Be Hereby Approved.
I want to say, Mr. President, that I am voting no on this project. As I reached out to the facilities manager and he did say, yes, there's a lot of parking issues, not because, I mean, not, this is to say he wasn't against it, but there is parking issues there and it's because the the Wallerstein Apartments, the people have caregivers that come in and there's parking on the street. So in my own experience of living on East 43rd Street and across the street, there's a house that is now a rental house and there's parties at times where there's parking problems on my street where normally cars can go back and forth easily. And when that happens, when there's some parties with parking issues, people have to wait at the end of before coming and going and it does cause a problem in my neighborhood when that happens. I live on a street where the fire department has to go down to calls and that because we have residential ADA accessible housing in my neighborhood. So I am very familiar with that area. They have fixed the curbs and the sidewalks. And years ago, there wasn't that issue with the curbs, but the the street is is narrow. And pre-COVID days, when there were concerts along the park, that's someplace where people park and it's and it's even worse, like I said, when there's concerts. This unit, most people these days in Erie do have two cars. And I'm just, when you have a guest over or, you know, people like to entertain and people like to entertain around their home outside with 4th of July, parties, picnics, what have you, I know, again, pre-COVID days, but hopefully with vaccinations. When I visit my friends who live in a townhouse along in specifically Milk Creek areas that are townhouses near the lake, their place provides parking for me as a guest. And my friends, you know, have small gatherings, but there's parking available for the guests where this I in my estimation, I have the papers right here that I got at City Hall. And it may look that you can do it on paper. I do see both sides of it. I know we've discussed it heavily. But I'm also a visitor, traveler, and you know, when I go to Savannah, Charleston, Beaufort, Maine, Portland, I mean, I've I I take trips. And there's unique historic cities, like that's what we always do. We go to, we walk historic neighborhoods. And in my estimation, this doesn't fit that neighborhood. I'm sorry. I know we all have different things to say about it. Just please respect my opinion. Thank you. I do respect Kathy's opinion. You know, we're talking about two different projects here, but I just, for the record, want to point out that the developer has complied with the parking requirements. And he has stressed that there's going to be that the demographic that he hopes to market these to are people that may be riding bikes, maybe not on the non-existent bike lane on 8th Street, but on the protected bike lane on 6th Street. If there is an issue with parking and you you want to change the zoning requirements for how many parking spaces are required, that's that's a separate issue that shouldn't be hanging up this particular development. And it's also like anticipating problems that are unrelated to people who will be living there. I mean, if if there's a lot of parking for Eight Great Tuesdays, that's what a dense neighborhood is supposed to do. That's what we want in and we're talking about density in in urban neighborhoods. And maybe there are more options to get people to Eight Great Tuesdays. I know that the, you know, the bus lots get filled really quickly, but if we try and vote something down because we're figuring out every single thing that could go wrong, I think this is a case where we should be figuring out and applauding something that might finally be going right in the city, somebody taking a risk and developing something. So that's all I have to say about this parking issue.
Voting on the resolution, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff is a no, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski.
The reason I vote no is not the development, but my question is about the LURDA. I think 10 years is a very generous donation to developers. I would like to see a 15-year commission if they leave after 10 years and one day the Bush Industries did. There is, there is one.
Ed, you're muted.
Okay, I've been corrected by Mr. Winarsky that there is. I didn't know that.
You can confirm with Mr. Betsa.
Yeah, Mr. Betsa, there is a penalty if they leave early?
There is not.
That's what I thought.
Do we have a provision in the LURDA that after the LURDA expires, they have to, they can't just leave, they have to to stick around for five years? Or a minimum of five years?
No.
No.
I'd like to see a five-year tax penalty if they did leave.
But they still have to pay their taxes. They still have to pay the taxes if they sell.
Correct. The the idea, the idea with LURDA is to promote development. And so the benefit to, and I'm not here picking a position, I'm just explaining it. The idea for the city, the benefit is that there is development that is taxable at the end of the term. So if someone were to build a significant structure and then move out, there would still be the taxable benefit to the city. The fact that they may move or sell or or stop occupying does not change the fact that the taxes are due. Oftentimes, there's reference to the Bush Industries development in the county that received the LURDA and then they moved out at the end of the 10-year period. While that's true, they moved and they didn't pay tax. The benefit of the structure was there and ultimately Lord Corporation moved in. And although there was no taxes received in the 10-year period, taxes have been paid consistently since that time period. So the idea with LURDA is to encourage development. I council did discuss the idea of having a requirement, but that would not be enforceable in a LURDA ordinance.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. President. Jim? Mr. Betsa, can we change that LURDA? Or by law, we can't do that?
Outside of the meeting, we can talk about different options, but the the short answer is no, that it would not be a permissible change to the ordinance.
So.
Any more discussion?
Number two.
I still have one more question for Mr. Betsa.
You're still muted.
You're muted, sir.
Mr. Betsa? Yes, I can hear you. And I'm going to give you a scenario. Somebody utilizes alerted for that 10 years. They sell it to somebody else. Now that it's a taxable property, what's to keep the new buyer from trying to utilize the LURDA, whether it be with remodeling, expansion, or anything like that? Is there that footnote or something in that LURDA that keeps that from happening?
No, but that that's not necessarily a bad thing. So let's let's follow that through. If we have a vacant piece of land and somebody builds a million-dollar structure on that property, for the first 10 years, they would not pay tax on that million dollars. It's now year 11 and now the owner sells the property to somebody else who now improves that property by another another million. That new buyer is now paying tax on a property of a million dollars for that tenure, for the next 10-year period. They're not going to pay tax on their million-dollar improvement to the million-dollar structure at the end of 20 years. So now 10 years of their ownership, they would start paying tax on $2 million of of development. So your your concern is not is not founded. They would be paying tax on the improvement that was made 10 years earlier, but you're still trying to incentivize them to make more improvements, even if they didn't transfer the property. So I I buy the property vacant. I put a million-dollar improvement on it. I don't pay tax for 10 years. I now start paying tax and I decide I'm going to build another level, another floor on my building. I won't pay tax on that new part of the development, but I'd still pay on the the old.
Great. Great explanation. Thank you.
Okay, going back to the vote, the resolution passes 5 to 2. We have a resolution by sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, pursuant to the provisions of zoning ordinance 80, 2005, In A Public Hearing Held On January 20th, 2021, A Request For Waterfront Conditional Use Submitted By P.E. Real Estate Holdings LLC For Construction Of A 9-Unit, 3-Story, Multiple-Family Dwelling Located At 824, 828 West 2nd, Parcel ID 4039206 and 207. The Property Being In The Waterfront Residential District Be Hereby Approved.
I wanted to speak on a couple of things. One is, I think it's important to clarify what redlining is. I don't know how this particular project got painted, painted with a brush that said it was an example of redlining. Redlining was a practice from the 1930s in which people in primarily, you know, minorities were shut out of the federal home lending program because of their race or nationality. Erie itself is on the redlining maps that have been made public through a project at the, at, I believe it's the University of Richmond. I am, and Kathy Shaw have been involved with a group of local citizens who are working to bring a redlining project to Erie to explain which neighborhoods were redlined and how that contributed to systemic racism. It contributed to a inability of minorities to get mortgages. It contributed to the very hollowing out of the central city that Erie refocused, that the mayor, that the city planning department, that, you know, private developers, that neighborhood organizations are working to turn around. So yeah, I, I did kind of have a, a slight smile on my face when one person spoke. And it was because I didn't understand how this could be described as a practice of redlining. It would actually be the opposite unless, unless there's a new definition of redlining that I'm not aware of. I mean, people talk about gentrification, but I don't think with whatever, nine units here and 10 units a block away, that that is going to contribute to gentrification. There are so many people in Erie and so many organizations and city hall administrators who are working so hard to bring back the city of Erie. I, I heard people who spoke today and they, they sent emails. I, I did not call the one person back, but I tried to keep up with the, you know, the opposition out there. I did try and email everybody back today and to tell them, thank you for your opinion, but I am voting yes. But I heard, and this is a quote, certainly, we're talking about this particular property now, certainly it will be developed at some point. Another quote, it's going to happen sooner or later. And another quote, at a later date. We, we know that from a presentation that we had from EDDC at our last meeting, that the real estate market is soft in Erie. It, it has been for a long time. It's an issue that I have heard about for years about how difficult it is to get investors to take a risk in rehabbing properties or putting up new properties. And we cannot, we cannot allow that to happen. We, we have to improve our tax base. I had questions about LERTA, as the mayor will well remember. There were some things that I wished we would have been able to do, but the fact is that we have an ordinance on the books right now for LERTA. We have somebody who is willing to commit an investment to the city of Erie. We have someone who has redesigned things and, and come back with new plans to meet the objections of the neighborhood. I thought it was interesting when somebody was talking about, you know, us opening our glass doors in the back of our house and looking at a three-story building. And what do they say, you know, people in glass houses shouldn't throw stones, but I don't have any glass doors at the back of my house. I live in a very old house. You know, I, when I want to look at the sunset, I, I walk down the street, I walk four blocks. That's one of the things where citizens with foresight, and I'm going to really pay tribute to the sons of Lake Erie, made sure that we had public access built into any kind of waterfront development. That's why you can walk along the bluffs and you can look at the sunset, or you can ride your bike along the bluffs. You can go to the foot of Liberty Street. We've had other people who, who have tried to say, this is only for me. You know, we had the man with dementia who tried to destroy the tree at the foot of Liberty Street because it blocked his view. I was actually surprised, I rode my bike, you know, I walked there a couple, when, you know, it wasn't snowing so hard. That tree is still there. He, he couldn't get rid of that tree. We have people now, we have plans for how to bring each neighborhood back. And I am happy to, to vote on this particular project. I hope that in the future, if this encourages other developers, maybe we can keep working on ways to improve communication with the neighbors. We don't want to lose the people who have, you know, have staked themselves there, who have lived there for decades. I love that neighborhood. That's why I love, you know, if I go to church downtown, I always walk home that way or I ride my bike home that way. There are nice, beautiful, tidy little homes there. And I think that we can learn some lessons from this. And hopefully we're going to learn a lesson that people believe in Erie and that we can start to grow our tax base. That's all.
Mr. President, I just had a quick comment to add to that, if good. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Some, some of it maybe what, what Liz just said, but I, I think there was a point that is kind of missed here. With any new investment comes improved housing choices, jobs, and of course increased tax revenues, which I think we all know we need. But I, I just want to thank the developer, I said this last time, for wanting to invest in Erie, for working so hard to get through the due diligence process and for seeking neighborhood input, which I know they did, and for participating in our extensive approval process. The current zoning regulations for WR, the Waterfront Residential District are open in, to, open for interpretation in some aspects, but they are currently what we have in place. You know, with the, you know, they're what developers are working for, for the, working with for the new developments. But I believe the, the regs can be improved, but we cannot change the regulations and build the process. So with that said, I just wanted to bring that point up and I continue to support both projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Voting on the resolution, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski?
I'm sorry, I was muted. I'm a no.
Resolution adopts 4 to 3. Okay, we have a wave rules. The administration has requested that we do a second reading on this ordinance that was already passed for first reading. I don't know. Yep, voting on waiving the rules. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Mr. Brzezinski?
No.
Way of the rules fails to adopt 4 to 3. You need five votes to pass a wave rules.
Yeah, I'm still here. You're hard to hear, Ed, because you're muted, but usually I go last. You, you want me to go first?
You want to go last? All right. Just, the last shall be first, the first shall be last, whatever you want. See you later. Ms. Allen, you're first. How's that? No problem. Liz?
All right. For my committee report, I attended the Blight of Property Review Committee meeting. And every month we get reports on individual properties to be voted on, to be added to the blight list. And I suggested that code enforcement also generate a report to add up the cost associated with these blighted properties. Because every piece of property comes with information about the amount of back taxes, the unpaid water bills. And I appreciate Kathy Rosdick also jumped in and told people on the, you know, on the meeting that there are other additional costs that, that are associated with blighted properties, including the cost when nearby properties drop in value due to the blight and the frequent police and fire responses. So I'm glad we'll be able to generate some data to continue to stress the need to address blight in Erie and in creative ways. It's not just about knocking properties down, but also building up. I also attended the workshop on Groundwork USA about the potential for Erie to become a groundwork USA city, which stresses that using urban farms and community gardens, even something like water testing of streams and other environmental, environmental steps to revitalize neighborhoods can be used to provide job training. I learned from a Servery staffer during that meeting that there are some things that Servery, with some suggestions, Servery would like to make to our ordinances on our urban agriculture. And so I will be getting together with her to find out what, what some things are that we can make improvements. So it all works together for groundwork. Again, I want to give credit to Kathy Rosdick for bringing groundwork to our attention. This is another area, I don't know if I'm explaining it adequately, but where Erie is on the path to become a groundwork city. We, we had amazing examples. I was really particularly interested in Milwaukee because I used to live there. But there are ways to network with community gardens to, you know, not just help people grow produce for themselves, but to get that produce to market, to help in the whole food desert thing. And there were a lot of good suggestions. We did this all on Zoom and we did the breakout rooms and there were a lot of really good, thoughtful suggestions from people. And one of the other brainstorms that came out of it was talking about, you know, possible community college involvement in some of the training opportunities. And I just want, I did not, was not able to attend the planning commission meeting yesterday. We're shoveling because our snow blower is in the shop, but the commission is still working on its short-term rental ordinance. And so sometimes sooner rather than later, we should be hearing about that and being asked to act on the short-term rental ordinance.
So, thank you, Liz. And make sure your husband does his exercises for those hips. I've got two of them to prove it. If he does the exercises, he'll be walking with you real quick. Okay, moving right along, Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended a meeting with the administration today to talk about the Erie Parking Authority municipal agreement. The meeting was to discuss, you know, the pros and cons of the proposal, but the outcome, just to cut it short, is to, that we need to have some further clarifications on the responsibilities and income sharing. So we're, we have another meeting next, next week and then we'll schedule a, a meeting as soon as possible with the parking authority to, to, you know, make sure we finalize the discussion and negotiate the agreement. So hopefully it's all going to continue to go as planned. Again, there's just some things we need to clarify. Regarding the Star Preservation Ordinance, we failed to adopt today, but we'll be contacting the State of Star Preservation Office tomorrow to see if there's any, if there's any, it'll be, if the funding will be jeopardized in any way and I'll report back to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Ms. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the second half of the Groundworks Workshop. Due to my work at St. James, I was unable to attend the morning session, but I did really like the ideas that were presented in the second half of the session. So hopefully the Groundworks will go full swing and we'll see good things in our city there. I attended a, a home team meeting where all of the different agencies that are helping the homeless and disenfranchised in our community got together and told what they were doing. And it really seems like everyone is working very hard in this pandemic to meet the needs of the homeless in our community as much as possible. Emily Fetschko from the Downtown Partnership did a, a talk about designing with dignity, with distancing, how the small businesses are aware of the homeless situation. And they do not want them to be arrested or anything like that for, you know, homeless. They just want people to help them as much as possible. So hopefully this designing with distancing and dignity will come into fruition and help with much-needed things like a, a public restroom facility and combining some ways to have a distancing in place with the proper protocols with COVID and everything. I thank the firefighters who spoke today, Tom Micek and Darren Hart. And Len Trot was also on with Chief Joe Waco. And we want to thank them for all their work in our fine city. And again, to reiterate, that, that Friendship Towers Fire, it was very sad that that man did pass away, but they were able to not have any evacuations of the building. You know, they know the proper protocol and everything, and they were able to contain it. So that's, was wonderful that no one had to go outside in freezing temperatures like that. I am working this weekend on Saturday with a group that is called the Caring Collaborative. And it's sponsored by Christ Community Church Cathedral of St. Paul, St. Mark's Episcopal Church, Light Center Ministries, New Life and Spirit Revival Center, the Erie Young Dems, the Erie Dems Black Caucus, Urban Erie Development Corporation, and Councilman Andre Horton. We're collecting donations of clothing, non-perishable food items and toiletries this Saturday from 12 till 3 at Christ Community Church on 923 East 6th Street. And then we'll be distributing them the following Sunday, the 27th, or I'll have to get that date, but that, I think it's, yeah, Saturday, February 27th, not Sunday, at the Upper Room to the people in need who come by at that time in the afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Mr. Witherspoon?
No report, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And Mr. Keys?
I was able to attend the sewer authority meeting this week. They have some things in the works that they're going to need our help on. They're looking at refinancing their bonds. They say it's going to be a cost savings to them. refinancing their bonds. They say it's going to be a cost savings to them. And so we'll see it when we get it.
Anything else, sir? That's it? Mr. Winarsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Keys brought a few items that he sent to our council colleague, one being part of the parking authority and our parking fee structure. What we have been doing as a council is trying to find ways to increase our revenues. But with that being said, we're always hoping to see if there's something new or better we can do both for the city and our citizens. I am going to suggest that we possibly make this one of our finance meeting priorities if we can possibly for the first week of March, our first meeting in March, as well as Mr. Keys did bring up some LERTA items that possibly we can amend or change, or even if we don't amend or change something in the LERTA as it is written, just get a update on how the alert is officially going financially, how many, how much, I know the mayor has given us updates in the past, but maybe we can use our finance meeting. Is that also if our finance chair, Ms. Shaw, deems that a good topic for our next finance meeting? As she just gave the thumbs up, if anybody didn't see it, so I will ask if we can get together with Paul and maybe he can get some numbers together with that, and we can go over those two items at our next finance meeting. But other than that, that's all I have for this evening. I will mention one more time, although I know there was citizens we have that were opposed to the project down on Second Street. We put alerted in place for a reason. We had property that was for sale that can be developed. There was looking to be developed. Our tax rolls are suffering. More more properties and buildings in this town are being demolished due to blight. And that's one of the reasons we put LERTA in place. So I'm confident this is going to be a positive for that neighborhood and for Erie. So with that, that is all I have, Mr. President. You're muted. No.
Council President, you muted yourself.
Can you hear me now? Okay. One of the things that we did do was we formed a committee with Ms. Ellen, Mr. Keys, and I. All future caucus topics and study sessions will be reviewed by the three of us and best decided as to where they fit, if they'd be in caucus, or if the time is going to be needed for a full study session or whatever. This way, we can kind of keep a control on what's going on. So, Mr. Winarsky, make sure you make up a list of what you want and let us know. And then we'll take a look at it. I apologize for any confusion. The bottom line is the Thursday before our meeting is when the agenda items have to be in. And if I did it last time with these two Second Street things, I could not do it this time. I hope I didn't lose $25,000. But if you didn't know it before the meeting, you're going to find out after the meeting. I'm confused. You know, a telephone call could have come this morning and said, hey, we're going to lose 25 if we don't pass it. Then it would be an emergency situation. We weren't, and we didn't, we didn't do that. That's all I have. I want to thank everybody for contributing and bringing their best selves to the meeting. Moving ahead, I don't want to hurt anybody. Mayor Schember, who do I ask next? I know you're last, so we have Kathy or Renee there?
Usually, just one of us will speak at your meeting. Renee would speak at the morning meeting, and I usually speak at the evening meeting.
Okay. So how about Mr. Betza before we get you then? Is he gone?
No, no, I'm I'm here. I can briefly speak. The only thing I want to say is that I know that council was hesitant to waive the rules, and I certainly understand that. I will just give you one other suggestion in the event of, we talked about whether or not grant funding is going to be lost or not. If you're ever placed in a situation where you feel that you have to make a decision quickly, one other option that is at council's disposal is to call a special meeting. And so at least in this instance, if we're, I certainly understand why council doesn't want to waive rules. That can lead to bad habits. But if you're pressed in a situation where before the end of the month, you have to do something, council has the ability to call a special meeting. That's always at your disposal. And so if that's what is presented, we can always revisit it. We haven't lost a grant. So I don't want anybody going home tonight, not being able to sleep. We're good.
Thank you, Mr. Betza. And if we need to do that, we will do that. Okay, Mayor Schember, you are the man.
Thank you. Thank you. I do want to thank you for at least passing the first reading of the amendment to Article 7 of the historic resource protection. That's very important. We move that forward as quickly as possible. Also, thanks for passing the change to firefighters pension. I definitely agree that that's a good thing that we can do for them. Also, I really appreciate the fact that you approved both 946 West Second and 824-828 West Second. I know there's controversy about that. I believe those are good things for Erie. We've listened to both sides carefully, talked with them both. And I think this is really going to help improve our community moving forward. I know there's some people that disagree with me, but I appreciate you guys being willing to to pass those. And I respect the people that disagree also. We can, you know, we can disagree on things, and I'd be worried if we agreed on everything, actually. I think we just have to have, you know, discussions with respect and respect each other's opinions. But there's nothing wrong with people disagreeing with me or or anyone else in my opinion. One way, you know, we have a two-part press conference tomorrow. 10:00 AM will be kind of the typical press conference, and we'll be looking at, the focus of this is on apprenticeship opportunities, particularly for young adults who maybe aren't going to college or don't want to go to college. There's some great family sustaining jobs available through our area trade unions. And we're going to be kind of explaining a lot of that at 10 o'clock in the press conference. Then for the second part, we're going to drive up to EMTA for an 11:00 AM press conference, where PAL will be unveiling something that's very exciting. So I'd encourage you all to to watch that if at all possible as well. Tomorrow afternoon is the Erie Downtown Partnership Annual Meeting at noon. So I encourage all of you to, if you can, to check in on that. Also, the last couple of weeks here, Deb Smith and the Economic Community Development Group have been working on the CDBG funding, which would go into effect July 1, you know, for the next 12 months. Then they've spent two full days back on Monday, February 8, and then again on Monday, February 15, going over proposals that were made. They are probably going to have about $3 million available to give to these groups to do things in Erie, particularly in the inner city, to help people. There's two more hearings this Friday, the 19th, one at 11:00 and one at 11:30. The first one is hands and some things they want to do. And the other one is Beacon Communities, which is Richford Arms, and they want to make significant improvements to that. So that I think that's one we'll look at pretty seriously. I want to really congratulate Renee and my team for how hard they're working to fill the board and commission openings that we have. And you're filling about half of them, and we're filling about half of them, and we want to coordinate with you. And I know Renee's working hard on getting you all that information that that's come in for the applicants for those positions. And last thing is, I just wanted to remind you, tomorrow at 1:00 PM, we'll do our city council briefing, where you hear from all the city department heads in terms of what's new and what's going on in their departments. This time seems to work better than the Friday, 11:00 AM. So I look forward to seeing many of you tomorrow at 1:00 PM for that council briefing. Thanks very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If you decide to call a special meeting, do the clerk's office need to advertise that?
Yes, it would be advertised just like any other meeting. So if that were to to happen, where there was ever a need for a special meeting, just let Lori know or let me know, and I'll work with Lori Watson to make sure that we do it right.
Okay, how much time prior to the meeting we have to have it in the paper?
Well, you're going to need to have at least 24 hours notice. But there are, depending on the circumstances, if you had a true emergency, then that is a different situation. But, Mr. Witherspoon, I think what we'd be looking at in something like this would be a minimum of 24 hours notice.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Laura, you have anything for us? You've been quiet for a couple of minutes. Is that a no?
Nothing, just to adjourn.
Say good night.
City Council adjourns at 9:04 PM. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.
Good night, everybody.